This is the City of Wapaka, first Tuesday of the month, City Council meeting.
This is our regular scheduled City Council meeting, and normally we start by approving the agenda and so on, but in calling the meeting to order. But instead of doing that, knowing that we have a large crowd in here, and we know the reason why they're here tonight, we're going to just skip right to public input, and then we'll go back and we'll work on the agenda as we go through that. And so when we, when we deal with public input, we allow people to speak on non-agenda items. And so if the item is not on the agenda and you want to speak to the City Council on that, you have the right to do that, and we have that set up for you to do that. Alls we ask is that you step up to the podium, use the microphone, because this is on radio and TV, and give your name and your address, and limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less. Okay, so with that said, who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Do I trust myself? First of all, my name's Harold Moore, M-O-H-R, and last name. Address is E-1511, State Road 54, Wapaka. And I'm here today to talk as a representative for all these folks behind me, especially for the members of the pool league who asked me to do this for them. We feel a great disservice has been done, not only to all of us as senior citizens, but we feel to the entire community of Wapaka. The Senior Center in Wapaka is talked about in a lot of places and in a very good light. You know, for a long time up in Wapaka, or up in Wasa, there was not even a viable Senior Center up there, when Wapaka had one. And then, we kind of get blindsided with what happened. You know, with all the good stuff that Sarah and her staff have brought to the Senior Center, all in the form of programs, the friendship, the goodwill, there isn't one of us here that don't walk into that door in the morning and feel wanted, feel welcome, and feel a part of something. And, in this day and age, that means a lot, especially after what's happened in the last year, where most of us were locked in our houses for 12 months. The request she made, not only for herself, but for the rest of her staff, all these people put forth their best effort, every day of the week, every day that they're there. When you walk into Sarah's office, I don't care what time of the day it is, if she's there, and if she's busy, and you need to talk, she's willing to listen. And if you have a request, she does her best to meet that request. My group, the Woodcarvers, that's how we ended up there. She called and asked if I would teach wood carving. I said sure. We had eight people wood carving. Our entire club moved to the Senior Center, to the rec center, we're upstairs in the rec center. We now have 35 members, who are now paying membership to the Senior Center. Personally, I probably would not have joined, had it not been being invited to instruct wood carving. So I guess what we don't understand is, in this day and age, when good employees are hard to find, and exceptional ones like Sarah and her staff are, are so easily pushed to the side. She loved her job, she loved it, every day of the week, she loved it. And she told many of us, many times, that it was the best job she's ever had, and to not even listen, or try to meet her request, I don't want to say demands, because I don't believe she's a demanding person, so I'm going to say request, but to try to meet her request, and for that to not happen, we just don't feel it's right. And we're asking all of you, as our council members, even though I don't live in the city, I'm a part of the Senior Center, but as our council members, to step up to the plate and do something about this. Make it right for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else?
Hi, my name's Roy Llewellyn, I live on 825 Seventh Street, in the City of Wapaka. First, I would like to thank Mr. Smith, Aaron, Andrew, and City Council for giving me this opportunity to speak. Over 12 years ago, we have been in a boat going in circles. The first several years went nowhere. Here we are, six years later, still going nowhere. Is it going to be another six years before anything is resolved? As we know, tomorrow never comes. A brighter fut, for a brighter future, we need to make some positive changes today. If a two, three, or even a five-year plan has been offered, at least we would have some glimmer of hope for our Senior Center Coordinator. We, the people, the members, the staff of the Senior Center, hope this door is not closed. We need to do the right thing. In closing, I would like to offer four words of advice. Peace, love, rock and roll. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Judy Shively, S-H-I-V-E-L-Y. Address is E-3407, Mountain View Lane, Wapaka. And I'm here with Jean, to support. I have been a member of the Senior Center since the beginning, and I have seen Sarah and her staff work far beyond the call of duty. She always goes the extra mile, and always with a smile. She gets to know each of our seniors personally, and takes a very good interest in us. She, her position might be filled, but Sarah can never be replaced for what she's done for us.
I'm Jean Antonevich, I've been a, and my address is 2420 Holmes Road, Wapaka. I've been a senior since before they started a fee at the Center. A few years later, they put a fee in, a year or two later, they raised the fee. I just heard now, they want to raise the fee again. It's like going to the grocery store. You go in, pay more, and come out with less. So, there's a reason why people resign, and there's a number of reasons that are more common. One of them is retirement, they don't get along with their boss, and/or they're not treated fairly. I'll let the people decide after I get done. We pulled some records on what was being done here at the Center, or not the Center, but the salaries, and it's going to be hard to fill a position like the coordinator, coordinator. She had a degree, she had pulled in about a dozen different certifications that she has, and she rolled in about over 30 programs, of which, one of them that probably her favorite is her Rocksteady Boxing, that she had $11,000 a grant to take care of that cost. She, we just finished a accreditation, she was here for two accreditations for the Senior Center, and we just finished the second one. Going to the pay, I think she's probably one of the lowest paid, other than the person that was hired about two and a half years ago. Otherwise, she is low, under, way underpaid. It's going to be hard to fill that spot. I know that she probably wasn't getting paid more than, I don't think she was making $20 an hour. She has five to eight people report to her. We had, we have a good candidate for you, and we've been working with her, and we've been training her for six years, and we'd like to keep her on. If you need the job change, which I guess that's part of the quorum here, that her idea that you've got to change jobs, get a pay raise, make her a director, she's running an organization, she's got people reporting to her, and she's running the whole organization. So, to hire somebody even part-time, at $20 an hour, I don't think it's going to happen, not with those credentials that she has. So, good luck if you find somebody, but I can't see anybody coming on with getting that kind of pay, and then doing the job that she does. I think the administrator was part of the hiring group when they hired her.
Thank you, Jean. That's three minutes. Thank you.
I thought we had.
Three minutes, that was three minutes. Thank you.
Sorry, folks, I've got more to say, but I'll have to save it.
My name is Don Tomit, I live in Wapaka, 1031 Charles Wright Drive. I have Parkinson's disease, and the Rocksteady Program has made a world of difference this year for me, and the 20 others that have been attending classes over the various months this year. We need her, and the city needs her. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Peter, excuse me, Peter Manley, 431 Second Street, South Wisconsin Rapids, Wisconsin. I'm also a member of the Rocksteady Boxing Program for Parkinson's Diseases. And I have to say, the one thing that Parkinson's people don't want to do is get up and speak in front of groups, but we'll suffer through that. I'll take a little bit different tack. This program has members from Wasa, Wisconsin Rapids, and Antigo, they drive quite a ways for it. Frankly, we're not here because of Sarah, we're here because of Sarah's quality programming. And the quality programming, and the rest of the programming in the Senior Citizens Center, is part of making quality of life in Wapaka attractive. That has benefits in a variety of ways, and I'll just give you one example that I've experienced. My wife spent thousands of dollars in the business just across the street. She could have spent it in Wasa, or Stevens Point, but we were here anyway, and she has a good feeling about this community. So quality of programming, and quality of life in Wapaka, are reasons to keep this programming well into the future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Legault, I live at 1218 Berlin Street, and I would, I'd like to talk on behalf of Sarah. She is, has admirable continuation of classes, of which doctors are even suggesting that their patients go to the Senior Center for different classes. Just had a friend of mine recall that to me just today. A little background about the situation here, is that, I think you need to know that in 2020, the census said that 60-plus people, in terms of the 60-plus people who live in Wapaka, there were 31 to 40% of Wapaka is 60-plus years old. And then going to, looking forward and going to 2025, that same projection of 31 to 40% again, but then looking at 2035, we're looking at 41 to 51% of the population of Wapaka, this is from the census, being people of 60 years or older. We have an incredible program here, which matches, would, would overtake any other community. I travel a lot, I see a lot of other people who go to Senior Centers, they have nothing compared to this. I also know that you got a person who is a grant writer, which a lot of nonprofits employ only a grant writer, because it's a very untypical skill that you would get from a person who was the head of a Senior Center. She's written many grants to the tune of support of $25,000 for this Senior Center, and I believe that this should be the will of the people, to keep Sarah on, and it should be in respect to her great service, and all of the things she's done for this community, to show in, that she should be rewarded for her fabulous programming, and her direction for the Senior Center. Thank you.
Is there any other public input? Any other public input? All right, we'll close the public input then, at this time, and we'll start our regular City Council meeting at this time. All right, I'll call this regular City Council meeting to order, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, we are going to hold a meeting here, if you plan on staying, that's fine, sit down, if you don't, please, please leave, so that we can begin our meeting here. It's going to be a long night for us. Okay, next up, we'll have Sandy read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media, in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And Sandy, you want to take role for us also?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Prochatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Neal.
Here.
Demetri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
All right, next up, we have the Consent Agenda. This is on items that we'll take with one motion. If you so choose to leave all of these items on the consent agenda, we'll vote with that with one motion. Everybody, I'd like to see anything move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, under the regular agenda. Sandy, you have one item?
Yes, the 2022 Capital Improvement Project Financing Presentation Information was uploaded to the city website, and then Kathy had handed out some more documentation. Is that the same?
It's the same, just that it's in print.
Okay, thank you.
So you should have something on your desk that Kathy handed out to you tonight? All right, knowing that, we would need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda, with that one addition. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried, under new business, we have a presentation by RW Baird on our 2022 capital projects and borrow. Kathy, you want to set this up? I know Justin's here tonight.
Yes, we are going to go over tonight, the debt service, or the borrowing plan to fund the 2022 capital projects that are, were provided in the packet. Again, these were also the same projects that you saw during the budget presentation for the capital improvement, and the, and the TIDS. So, I just want to let Justin go over what we're looking at doing to be able to finance not only the 22 projects, but also the Public Works Garage, and the contracts that you've already entered into for the garage. So, Justin, go ahead.
Thank you, Kathy. It's great to see everyone, happy holidays. So, so as Kathy mentioned, this is really to talk about the 2022 Plan of Finance here, that you, that you should have a packet in front of you going through, so I'll go through that. But really, when you think about the municipal bond world, over the last year plus, it's been an interesting ride. We're still at historically low interest rates, you've probably seen it with mortgage rates, et cetera. You know, are they as low as they were at the end of 2020? No. Are they still historically low? Yes. So this is a really good time to be thinking about entering the marketplace to lock in these, the interest rates for some of these significant projects that the city has. You know, Kathy and I, we've been planning for this for, for many years, so, you know, it's, it's been accumulation of, of multiple different strategies, and paying off debt for many years, refinancing debt, taking advantage over the, over the last couple of years of the interest rates. And so tonight, you'll see how this all kind of comes together, so it's pretty exciting to be able to, to be up here tonight talking about this. So really, the, when you look at the Plan of Finance here, there's going to be two different steps in the process. The first one is to issue a note anticipation note. So the reason for this short-term financing, is one, because it allows you to fund all the projects, and include local banks in, in the borrowing process. There's going to be no cost to do this. It allows us to not do two public bond issues, it allows us to do one note, that doesn't cost anything, and then refinance that when we're ready, and timing is optimal, later down the road into one borrowing. So it reduces the overall cost of issuance tied to this. It also gives flexibility to, like I said, to lock in the interest rates between council meetings, when, when we're ready, because the interest rate market right now is, is a little volatile, and so this allows us the flexibility to take advantage, when, when we see that drop in interest rates, we can, we can act on it, and lock in when we need to. It's also the ability to, to move funds around, so if one project comes in a little bit less, and one project comes in a little bit more, you're able to maybe push some of that money that, from the Public Works project, into a different capital project that may have come in at a different cost than what you projected. So it allows you to be flexible and nimble with, with the project costs. So the total borrowing for, for not only the 2022 normal capital improvement projects of $1,500,000, it also includes that Public Works Garage for the $6.95 million. So a total borrowing of $8,450,000. So this short-term note's going to mature August 2nd of 2022, and be callable May 2nd of 2022. The estimated interest rate, 0.75%. So pretty, pretty low interest rate to be able to do this. Then, as we're go, from pretty much now through spring of next year, kind of in that February, March, April timeframe, we're going to be working on getting the documents put together to be able to go out to the market, like when we're ready. So we're going to go for a bond credit rating, like we have in the past, the city has an A-plus bond credit rating, so I would anticipate the same rating for, for this financing. So we'll be going through that process, and then that one is going to be a 20-year financing. So that's going to have components of, again, the CIP, the 2022 CIP, we're going to amortize that debt in a 10-year period. That's what the city has done historically, that's, that's, that's great. The other portion, the Public Works building, that has a useful life beyond of 20 years. You can issue general obligation debt for up to 20 years. So that's the reason why we're, we're taking that issue, and amortizing it over a longer period of time, than the 10-year period that we usually do for, say, the equipment-type purchases and other capital needs of the, of the city. So this is going to mature March 1 of 2023 to 2042, with the first interest being March 1 of 2023. It'll be callable March 1 of 2030, or any date thereafter, and the estimated interest rate is 3.22% on that. I would anticipate coming in much better if we were in the bond market today, but for projection purposes, and to be conservative, we like to err on a little bit higher for projections, and then come in hopefully much better when, when the time comes. The other portion of this financing plan is to pay off some of the TID number 3 State Trust Fund Loan Debt. So as you can see in there, with this overall plan, we're looking at trying to close three tax increment districts, T3, 6, and 9. So that's going to be kind of working over the next, you know, couple months to, to complete that process, and, and in one of the TIDS, we can pay off the debt and save interest costs in the process. So if you go to page 2, this, this will give you the timeline, so a lot of different steps in this process. So tonight, it's really to, to hear the Plan of Finance, and kind of give us the, the go-ahead to move forward with what we presented tonight. So we'll, we'll put together a preliminary term sheet, that'll be sent out to the local and national banks, for them to take a look at and bid on. And then the payoff of the State Trust Fund Loan will occur on January 11th of 2022. Council will adopt the NAN Award Resolution, meaning that's when you're going to lock in the interest rate for the short-term financing, on January 18th, and at that same meeting, adopt the Parameters Resolution for the General Obligation Refunding Bonds, refinancing that note anticipation note. That'll give authority to the Finance Director, City Administrator, or Mayor to sign off on the bond sale, again, when we're ready and timing is optimal. And this is a strategy that we've used on prior financings, for the city to be, to be flexible. So the NAN would close February 2nd of 2022, and at that same time, preparations are made for the, the General Obligation Refinancing, so the official statement, again, the bond rating, and then the marketing. If everything goes well, and the interest rates are looking very attractive, we will, we will go to the bond marketplace, and at that particular time, send it to one of the authorized approving people to sign off on the, the award. And then the anticipated closing for the, the General Obligation Debt would be April 5th of 2022. So a few steps in the process, but it's kind of all lines up very, very nicely, there's a lot of different steps that Kathy, myself, Aaron, need to work on over the next couple of months, to get to that point. So page 3, this is, there's a lot of numbers on this page, you've seen this, this financing illustration in the past, but it really takes into account not only the existing debt service for the city, the levy-supported debt service, but it also takes a look it also takes a look at what we have this upcoming year and then what we may have in the future. So we're not just looking at a snapshot in time. We're trying to plan out for those future potential borrowings as well into the overall plan of finance. So on the left side of the page, that's the existing debt service. Now, when you look at that, there's a nice drop in 2023 and that's going to be a strategic plan that we're doing to pay off some debt in 2023 to create that drop. It's at 3% interest rates and the kind of thought process is pay off that debt. We had a little bit higher interest rate because we can get likely a lower interest rate in the marketplace, save interest costs that way. Then you can see how the, in purple there, that's the plan that we're talking about tonight. So that, you can see how the general obligation refunding bonds, $6,950,000, that's tied to the public works project. So you can see how that's amortized over the 20-year period. Then there's the $1,500,000. That's tied directly to the 2022 capital improvement projects. And then going forward, that's the levy-supported future borrowings. Again, you know, this is going to be flexible, something that we update annually as things arise because, you know, we don't exactly know what's going to happen in 2026, but we do have plans, capital improvement plans, that allow us to at least look at it now so we can start planning for it, just like we've been planning for the public works project for the last several years, to be able to do this. And then on the far right side of the page, you can see the combined debt service of what it may look like after all these potential borrowings take place. So it's all very good in that when we started looking at this many years ago, the city's debt was much, put it this way, it was a little bit higher than it is now. You know, Kathy and council, you've done an excellent job being very strategic and paying off debt when possible, refinancing debt. And that's what's allowed us to be able to do this and actually see a debt service mil rate drop year over year. Because at the same time, again, we're closing tax increment districts, which will allow us to be able to do these little bit larger borrowing. So if you look at page four, I think this is a good illustration for council because this shows again the general obligation debt capacity for the city. So municipalities are allowed to borrow 5% of your equalized valuation. The city's valuation is $475 million, so just over $23 million in available capacity. The city has an internal policy not to exceed 3.75% of the 5% allowed. That's just to always give you enough breathing room in case a future project unexpectedly comes up, that you have the ability to borrow for it if you need. This shows you that we are going to not only stay under the policy with these, all these borrowings that I just showed you on the prior page. So you can get comfort that at least even with this larger public works project, you're not going to exceed your policy, your internal policy that you have. So I think that really kind of shows a nice picture and it also factors in all that future debt. So you can see that come 2042, the debt is gone. Now, is the city going to continue to likely borrow for capital projects year over year? Probably. But again, this shows a nice picture that says we're cognizant of the policy and we definitely are working hard to make sure you stay within the policy and get projects done as needed. So with that, entertain any questions if you have any.
Thanks, Justin. Anybody have any specific questions?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Going back to the state trust fund loan for the TID financing for number three, I'm a bit confused as to what the total outstanding balance is. It says that it's $338,000 and then over to the right, it says it's $488,000. So in addition to that, is that balance going to be put onto a 20-year amortization? Or could you explain that a little bit, please?
Good question. So the $158,000 in 2020, that $158,109, that is not included in the payoff. That's going to be paid off on March 15th. So that, when you look at the $162,000, $167,000, and then there's some interest, that's what gets you up to that number. And it's not going to be included in the refinancing. It's strictly cash that is within the TID that's going to go to pay off this debt service.
Anybody else have any questions?
Oh, may I?
Yeah, keep going.
How long can we have the note anticipation note at 0.75%?
So this is going to be basically a six-month maturity. So you can have it for up to six months. We can, you can do note anticipation notes for up to five years, but honestly, I would anticipate that interest rates will slowly continue to increase over time. Who knows? I mean, we have all these unexpected things happening globally, domestically, et cetera. I mean, especially with new variants and so forth. We've seen kind of the market kind of go crazy a little bit over the last weeks. But if everything continues to hopefully go as planned, you know, and the inflation stuff that you would anticipate, that we would want to be in the market sooner rather than later.
When you talk about getting into the market, Justin, we're working at a pace that is, for a better term, as quick as we can get into the market?
I would say as quick, but we need to basically have this close after March 1. Because after March 1 is the payment dates and that allows us to go with the full 20 years for this financing. So kind of working around that, kind of in that March, that February time is when we're going to start looking at getting into the market. So it's going to be pretty, it's pretty quick, especially with the holiday, you know, so January is going to be busy.
Okay, thanks. Kathy, as part of your packet, you have the capital improvement plan for the next five years, but basically we're looking at the close years here. Anything you want to address there?
Again, a lot, some of these projects, like the police squads, I'm trying to think of some of the $110,000 for the public works garage, some of these projects already have been committed by the council. So it's pretty much just when we borrow, we'll be reimbursing ourselves for council action. So there are other projects out here that still are out and are up for bid, like High and Harrison Street. As soon as that bid is in, we'll know whether or not $685,000 is enough, depending on where construction costs are fluctuating right now. We'll have to see how we can stay within that million and a half. As you can see, these projects right now are $1,488,000, so there is a little wiggle room in the 1.5, but not much. And that's the reason why we're looking at this note anticipation note, that if we had to, we can adjust based on what we're getting for bids. Same thing with the public works garage. Our assumption with the $475,000 for the construction management contract that was approved, the balance would be about 6.4, 6.5 for the construction of the garage, depending on how bids come in and prices for commodities, you know, is up in the air. But this gets us to be fluid enough that we can go and prioritize or adjust our borrowing when we finally go. But at least we'll have cash. We won't be strapped for cash flow, which I don't see any problem with. The way a lot of the contracts are going to be administered, that we would have a problem. But this just allows us to have that cash on hand to pay any of these contracts.
All right. Anybody have any other questions, comments? Justin, thank you.
Thank you.
For that explanation. Appreciate it. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Safe trip. Okay, to go along with that then, for this to work out here, Kathy has recommended that we close three of our TID districts that we have and to do that, we need to approve a resolution that does that?
No.
You want to?
You're jumping ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, explain.
With this item, I need to have council action to approve the prepayment of the 2016 trust fund loan for TID 3 in the amount of $338,795.73 using the tax increment funds from TIDs 3 and 6. That'll set up that next item, Mayor.
Okay, hold on a second. A second.
There is no action required for the starting of the NANS. That'll be done in January.
Okay, so Attorney Hart, you know, help me out a little bit here. When we're paying off a debt here, does this have to be specifically stated on our agenda?
I think so.
No, bond council said that it just needed to be part of the presentation. Right.
Okay, all right. So give me the dollar amount again.
It's in my item. It's $338,795.73 for the 2016 state trust fund loan for TID number 3 using tax increment funds from TIDs 3 and 6.
Okay.
Because 3 does not have enough increment, 6 is the donor TID.
So it's coming from?
3 and 6.
3 and 6. Okay. So everybody understand what Kathy's trying to do here is to pay off a loan that we have using funds that we have in cash reserves or cash amounts that we have in our TID 3 and 6 accounts. So we're requesting a motion to approve the paying off of that state's trust fund.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut that we approve of paying off the 2016 state trust fund in the amount of $338,795.73 using funds that are available in TID 3 and 6. Any discussion? Hold call. Sandy will call the roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Kathy, keep leading the card here so I don't screw up again.
Okay. Now, if you want to go over those resolutions that we have for the termination of TIDs 3, 6, and 9.
Okay, and we're doing those separately. We're required to do them separately.
We're required to have separate resolutions for each one of those.
And let me ask you a question before I put it out on the floor. Is this something that has to be approved by the joint?
No.
Board of Review, Board, what is it?
Joint.
Joint Review Board?
No, this does not have to be approved by the joint review board.
Okay, all right.
But they will be notified.
All right. So Resolution Number 1498 is the termination of TIF district number 3. We would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin that we approve Resolution 1498. Discussion?
I noticed a discrepancy between the agenda numbering and what's in the package. Am I misreading that?
We did amend. I did send up amendment to Sandy to fix the numbers.
I didn't catch that.
Yeah.
So you mean the agenda that was on the website?
Yes.
Okay, okay. But we're using the 1498 for TIF 3?
Yep.
Okay. Paul, you got a question?
Kathy, are any of these terminations for TIF districts still owing the city general fund?
They will not at the end of this, once they're closed and we collect the full increment. They will have paid back the million and a half of debt service levy that was used to pay debt. And that's where we would be using those funds to pay off the 2018 debts outstanding to make sure that we stay within our debt service parameters and continue to lower the levy amounts.
So the function of closing them will pay us off?
Yes, and lower the tax rate.
Okay, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Yeah, so there are, obviously we have more TIDs and there are those TIDs do owe the city money and also owe our utilities money too. And obviously, we're working to get through that process.
These, TID 3 did have an advance to the sewer and water or from the sewer and water and that was paid in 2020 back. There was about $75,000 that they owed, the TIF 3 owed the water and sewer and that was paid back. And then now we're going to pay back the funds, the debt service fund with this final increment that we're collecting in 2022.
So Kathy, just to piggyback what Paul's asking, so when you close a TIF district, basically what that means is that the full value goes back on the tax.
Correct.
And so then the county and the school district and Fox Valley Tech start receiving the improvements that have been made, the taxes on the improvements that have been made on that property since the TIF had opened, correct?
Correct. There's about $36 million worth of equalized value that will go back on and there's a reduction of the TIF levy that's included in the amounts that are levied, a reduction of $1.1 million.
And then let me just ask you one more question to go along with that. When you do close the TIF, will there be still monies available to distribute to the other, to the taxing authorities?
Maybe, maybe not. Until we do the final accounting and pay back all of the debt service and any of the fees, we do have to have Johnson Block do the final accounting audit and they help me prepare the final report to the Department of Revenue to close the TIDs. So there is some professional fees. There's also with TID number 3, there are some outstanding development agreements that we have to put in escrow, the balance of the money that we owe these developers to the end of their agreement. So there'll be some escrow money set aside for those development agreements. The possibility would be now is how much would be available till the end, till we do close them and do the accounting would be what's available in TIF 6. There may be some money available there, depending.
Okay.
Okay.
And when we talk about, again, talk about distributing to the other taxing authorities, the city is part of that?
Correct. We would get about 40% of the remaining balance.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other question? Yeah, Dimitri, go.
I just want to make sure I understand. So going along with what the mayor was saying, that will not only lower the city's levy, but it should also help the levy from the standpoint of the school district, the county and so forth.
If you look at the item that I provided on the, with the resolutions, the updated one, I gave you a what-if type of levy, but using this year's levy and this year's assessed value and equalized value and everything staying the same. The only thing changing in this presentation on page six of that, that item is how much we would have to levy for the TIFs. And with those three TIFs closing, as I said, the TIF increment goes from almost $2 million to $924,000, which if you, like I said, kept everything all the same, the tax rate would have gone, would go down next year by $2.69. Now, the caveat is when a TIF closes, the municipality has, and the taxing jurisdiction has the capability under levy limits to use some of that increase in, in, in value to make up and increase their levy. But it doesn't do anything to the rate because you're spreading that dollar amount over still a bigger base. So there, there's some adjustments that may would, may have to be looked at. But right now, I just presented what it would look like if no, none of the taxing jurisdictions raised their levy because of the closing of the TIDS or net new construction for next, next year. So next year's tax bill at, in December of '22 could go down, if everything stayed the same, by $2.69 on top of what it went down this year.
You can see a picture of that if you look at eighty-two, page eighty-two in your packet of what she's talking about and just looking down at the bottom line. But you can also see the city part of that too. So anybody else have any comments, questions? All right, so we're voting on closing of TID number three with using Resolution 1498. Sandy will call a roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye. Was there a motion?
There was.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Aye.
Colin, I'll take care of the management part of the.
I didn't hear one, so.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, and then we have TID number six. We're also requesting, which is our West Fulton Street TID District. And we're requesting this through Resolution Number 1499. Would you like to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Puchatsky, that we terminate TID number six with Resolution Number 1499. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, and then the last TID to be terminated is TID number nine, which is Royalton Street. If you remember where the old buyer's guide is, that's, that's the TID that we're talking about. And this is Resolution Number 1500. We would need a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we terminate TID number nine with Resolution Number 1500. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, Kathy, thank you. I know Justin is still hanging around. Do we need him for anything else?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. All right, next up, Paul Hagan, this is aircraft hangar lot lease for a hangar number lot 13. It's being transferred.
Up for your consideration on page eighty-three is a lease between the city and DSBS Incorporated of Larson Road, Wapaka for a 30-year lease. And you said this is being transferred?
Sold.
Sold, okay, thank you. Beginning, looks like the lease was in February of 2022, 2020 to February of 2050.
Paul, may I jump in?
Of course.
That's a typo, and it's going to be corrected.
It should say 2022 to 2052. Okay, I was wondering about that. Thought it was a trend.
It'll be corrected before signing.
Yeah, we're not going backwards.
Okay. Then that explains my question.
Yeah, so if you look at the aircraft hangar lease and look at the term, everybody, before this gets assigned and what we want you to approve is February of, first day of February 2022 through the date of February, first of February 2052.
Okay.
Okay, 30 years. Anybody have any discussion on that? Paul, did you want to make a motion on?
I would, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the aircraft hangar lot lease being sold to, sorry. To, was it again?
DSBS.
DSBS Incorporated. Thank you. Didn't catch it. So Sandy, you want to call a roll?
I will. Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up for the next few pages, we have Justin. And we'll start with the waste disposable for, for the city's facilities.
Yes, so this is garbage pickup for our city facility. So City Hall, Library, Rec Center, PD, Water Sewer, a few other departments. We use Gration in the past, and so with, I guess I'm kind of stumped a little bit because I don't want to get this mixed up with the residential service. This is separate. This is just what we need for our employees and our functions here at the city of Wapaka. So we, we did this along the lines with the residential service. We put out a request for proposal, much the same way, asking for these services again. This one again is for five years. This one, well, went a little different. We only received one proposal, not really surprisingly, because we know already that Gration and GFL have merged into one. Waste Management declined to submit, and then Harders doesn't pick up containers of this nature in this area. So that left us with just Gration disposal, which we know is Gration slash GFL. This is an annual, so $11,580. It comes out of our maintenance budgets for the various facilities. We did budget for this last year, like we do every single year. It'll fit within. So it's a five-year contract with no annual increases. So the quote that they submitted is included behind the memo, but just looking for approval to continue using Gration for the facility pickup.
Okay, so we're looking, entering into an agreement with Gration Disposal and Recycling LLC of New London for a years 2022 through 2026 with an amount not to exceed $11,850 per year. Anybody want to make a motion on that?
Move.
I'm sorry, Dave Peterson, motion by Peterson.
Second.
Second by Puchatsky, that we approve this request. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin.
So the next one, page ninety-three, is a memo regarding our uniform towel and floor mat services. Again, these are services that we hire out. So we get the individuals in public works and in park and rec uniforms. They provide towels and then floor mats for the rest of the facilities. Those are maintained on a weekly basis to make our guys looking nice and keep our facilities clean as well. This is a multi-year agreement. In the past, we have used J, G and K, excuse me, which was acquired by Cintas. That agreement is going to expire by the end of the year here. So once again, put an RFP together like we usually do and put that out there and receive several proposals back. Those are summarized in the table following the memo on ninety-four. It's a lot of numbers because they provide a lot of different things. And Russ and I look at this very closely and every year and see which items are the most important. The first one on the left, the shirts, are the ones that we go through the most. So they have the greatest impact. So with that, I mean, we're looking at Cintas being the best bank for our, our buck. It's typically around $7,000 a year. It's give or take based on, you know, how often they have to go through shirts, pants, towels, rugs, that sort of thing. Again, it's budgeted every year with the budget process. There are slight increases as we go with anything else, but we budget for it and it's something that we, we use every year. So with that, I'm looking for approval to go into agreement with Cintas for another five years, 22 through 26.
All right, anybody have any questions or would like to make a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, that we enter into an agreement with Cintas for uniform towel and floor mat service for the five years 2022 through 2026. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
You're up.
All right, next one, 103, is a state municipal financial agreement for State Highway 49, starting here on the north end of Wapaka up to Scandinavia. This is a DOT project, so the Wisconsin Department of Transportation is planning resurfacing of Highway 49. Thanks for the assist there in the map showing up there. As you can see, within the city of Wapaka and then heading north up to Scandinavia, we are obviously only concerned with the part that's in the city of Wapaka. The project will start design here shortly. It's slated for construction, from what they told me, anywhere from 2023 to 2025. The design and the construction is going to be funded mostly by WISDOT. There is a small portion that we will have to fund, and that's why I'm here talking to you tonight about it. If you can scroll down, there is a, the beginning of the actual document on 106 is the actual financial agreement. It's very similar to our Main Street one, but a much different project, where it's just all laid out, where there are eligible items and ineligible items. Here, again, the ineligible items are the utilities. We're going to have to adjust some of the utilities, manholes, valves, that sort of thing. That's on us. And really, what they're asked, what we have budgeted or what they have set aside is $16,100. That's what we'd be on the hook for with this project. That will just come out of our utility maintenance budget. It's a very small amount for what we're talking about as far as a road project. That could be millions of dollars, and that is all covered by WISDOT. So I guess with that, I'll just kind of go through a little bit more of what they will do, the design, the grading, all the storm sewer, the construction, the pavement, the signing. That's all going to be covered with the construction. There are, there are some maintenance responsibilities tied into this, which we already do in that section. We already take care of a lot of that stuff as, as far as maintaining that section of the road. So it's nothing really new, except for just having the agreement that will cover the utility improvements. So with that, I'm looking for council to, to approve the state municipal maintenance agreement and the state municipal financial agreement for the Highway 49 project.
Justin, do you want to touch on what they're not funding that the city might be thinking about doing as long as, or is that, is that a future discussion?
Sure. So they will take care of anything that is regards to grading, base, aggregate, paving, curb and gutter, any kind of storm sewer that they see fit, signing, pavement marking, and sidewalks and driveways. Except for if we request those things and they don't see a need for it, then we would pay for that. So you get into the thing where we, we could decide to extend sidewalk past the bridge up to Timber Drive if we really wanted to. If they don't see that as a necessity, then that's 100% on us. So at this, at this juncture, this is not, that thing is, that's not in there. So.
Okay.
That was, I think that's what you're leading to, because that was brought up as far as a pedestrian connection.
Right. Right. That's a good example. Scott?
And the $16,000 are anticipating that's going to be our cost. Are, are we going to have, are they going to do that moving? Or are we going to have to bid that out? Or how's, how we're, how's that working?
They'll, so WISDOT will hire an engineer to design the project, and then that project will be let out to bid. And they'll have those items in there, and a contractor will.
They'll just bill us.
Complete, yes, and then we have to pay them back for that work.
All right. We need to, we need a motion to approve this request for a state municipal maintenance agreement and a state municipal financial agreement for, with WISDOT for a project on State Highway 49. Anybody want to make that motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we enter into this agreement. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin, we got an MOU here.
Yep, I'll keep rolling. 115 is the next memo. This is proposed between the city of Wapaka and First Baptist Church on 1500 Roman Road. If you're not familiar with the area, that is just south of the Wapaka Learning Center. Over this last summer, the church had an issue with their well. Right now, they're serviced by a private well and septic. They have done some expansion in the past. They've been able to utilize those existing facilities, except for during the summertime. They had an issue with the well. It failed per DNR standards. And what that triggered was obviously looking into connecting to us for, well, for water, first of all. The church and their contractor decided, hey, long-term, let's connect to the city. We did not have a main currently existing adjacent to the property, so we have to extend a line down basically from the school. You could scroll down, Aaron, please, to 118 is a very. You could scroll down, Aaron, please, to one eighteen is a very good aerial that shows what I'm talking about. So it's quite a long way. It's going to be quite an extension, a fairly, a decent-sized project to connect one customer. But there is a need, this, like I said, the church and school has expanded. They're even considering future additions. So clean, safe drinking water from us is definitely a service they would want and need, even for a sprinkler system moving forward as they get bigger. So in order to make this work, I have a MOU that was put together by Attorney Sorenson, basically lays out the agreement. So we are providing the water to the church. In return, the church is willing to pay all the costs for installing the water. That's construction and design. We're looking to get this in place like right now so we can get a designer on board and then have plans ready and build in the summer, ideally since we are proposing to cut through the school property to do this in the summer when school is not in, obviously. They have agreed to put a down payment of ten thousand dollars down to, well, initiate the project. So from there, we can pull from that with any expenses that we have as far as paying for design of this project. And then they are responsible for, I guess, all the costs after that as well. The final caveat of this is in the event that they need sanitary sewer, we can kind of renew this agreement and have the same types of terms where we extend sewer at their cost and connect them that way, so. The memo is there, signed by the president of the Baptist Church. Yes, I am looking for approval from council to go into this agreement and connect the church for water.
All right, does anybody understand what the request is here? We're trying to enter into an agreement with the Baptist Church School to connect them to our city water. Need a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Chestnut.
Second.
Second by Hagan, that we enter into an agreement with the First Baptist Church to connect municipal water. Any discussion? Go ahead, Scott.
When bid to let on contract sign, will the contract be signed by Baptist Church or us? As far as, you know, payment, I guess is what I'm worried about, the legality of it.
It will be by us, and they will reimburse us.
Okay.
For those expenses.
Just, so if something happens, we're on the hook, then basically we'd have to go after them in a lawsuit.
Well, we, we want the control of this water line because we want it to be done right into our standards, DNR standards.
All right. Just to clarify, thanks.
Yep, well, and that's why we asked for the ten, ten thousand down, so it starts that.
It'll be substantially more than that when it's done looking at the line. All right.
So the, um, the church will also then pay for fixing the damage to the field and the school property if we have to cut through the road.
Yep. Yeah, so that, the road we chose was through, I guess, the practice field there. It's grass. I mean, that's an efficient way to restore the road there. That's our road. But there again, that'll be part of that project where that restoration cost will be done or be completed by a contractor, which then be paid for ultimately by the church.
Yeah, you know, if this was a lot, vacant lot, and somebody was going to connect to our city water, you know, the homeowner would be charged for the connection from the road to their property. Well, the water line that we have is so far away, such a long line that we'd have to put in, and it's only one customer. Don't forget that as city council members, we are actually the board of directors of this, of this city-run utility. So we want to make sure that we do it in the, in the best spirit that makes a profit for us. And running a line that long for one customer doesn't make a lot of sense without help from the owner of the property. That's why we're putting together this memorandum of understanding. Okay? Everybody want to, did we make a motion?
Um, yes.
We did, okay. Get on talking, I forget.
Sorry.
Maybe you should keep asking. All right, Sandy will call a roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, I think you have one more?
One more.
All right.
Then I'll stop.
Got your call card?
One nineteen is the next memo. This is for our combination sewer cleaner truck. Typically, we call it our Vector. That is the large green piece of equipment that drives around. It cleans all of our sewers, our sanitary sewers and our storm sewers. Lot of hoses, lot of pressure, lot of water, big old tank in the back that sucks things up into it. It's very important piece of equipment for us because we clean all of our sanitary lines annually. The DNR, well, we have to report to them on that, and they make sure we do. And it's also a liability thing. If we did not clean it and we had some backups, the city would be open to liability, liability, excuse me. The, the current truck we have is, we, we bought it two thousand nine, used. It was built in two thousand three. It's seventeen years old. Every year, we are replacing something of it, on it. Well, thousands of dollars. Usually, we're, we're anywhere from a range of three to five thousand dollars. Water tanks are starting to go shot on it. We're looking at another fifteen to seventeen thousand to replace those. But we've had this in our capital plan to replace for a number of years, and it is time. Now, it is on the plan for twenty-twenty-two. I'm trying to get as much of a jump on this as I can because of lead times with everything. We, it takes, it takes at least six months to get one of these things. The chassis are pretty much ready, but it's a very specialized piece of equipment. So it takes, it's a long lead time. And like I said, things, when they have been going wrong, which has been frequent, have been very expensive. So we have budgeted four hundred fifty thousand out of the sanitary sewer utility fund in twenty-two. Between myself, Roger Hanson, Jake Waller, and the sewer guys, we looked into a number of these trucks. Roger and Jake were able to get three solid bids or quotes on this, which is shown right there. We had one low, the EnviroTech. It was a truck that we really liked, and it came in at a very favorable cost. We are trading in our old one and picking up that one. That is the final dollar amount for plus to trade in. Since we are within budget, we're looking for a couple add-ons. One is roughly six thousand dollars, which adds an additional liner inside of the main waste tank. Well, what that means is everything that's sucked out of the sewer goes in this one main tank. It's mostly water, but it can also have some sand and other things abrasive within it. This is one of the biggest main components on the truck. We feel it's well worth that. And then also is an extended warranty on the powertrain, which is the engine transmission and a few other things. That would be five years at roughly eleven thousand dollars. And the reason we want these things is our current truck right now is seventeen years. We want to buy this one brand-new and keep it for at least fifteen. The goal is much longer than that, twenty for sure. It'd be nice not to have to purchase another one in my career here. So we want to take every step imaginable to maintain this piece of equipment. It's very valuable. It's very important to us. We baby this thing as much as we can, and it's obviously very expensive. There is a pretty vanilla table. It just kind of lays out the quotes we got, including the warranties. The other thing that we really liked about it, it did have the best warranties in it. You can see the list there is quite a bit longer than the other two. On top of that, being the low, and having an email at the very bottom here, I'll get you a page number, Aaron, one thirty-two, from the salesperson saying that if we can get approval in December, we should be able to get this to us before June. So that is something we are really looking forward to get, I guess, back in our fleet, so. There's a lot of information in the packet. We spent a lot of time sorting through this. We feel very confident in this machine. So I'm looking for approval to award EnviroTech equipment for an amount not to exceed four hundred forty-seven thousand one thirty-three for a VacCon combination sewer cleaner truck, and that is to come out of the twenty-twenty-two sewer revenue bonds, correct, Kathy? Got it right.
Nice. Everybody understand what the request is? Anybody want to make a motion?
I, I just have a question.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Eric.
Um, the extended warranty, so if you're buying new, you're already getting a warranty? So how long is that warranty?
Well, there's a one-year general, kind of like your car. It covers most things if it's like a defect. The five-year, let me get to it. It's five years, two hundred thousand miles on the, it's a Cummins diesel. It also adds on the transmission and then towing if we need it. Let's see here, it's, there's some, there's some doc, or excuse me, some information on that in there as well. Starter, alternator, steering cab, hood, wiring system, cooling system, climate control, charging system, cranking system, ignition system, intake system, braking, light, fuel, auxiliary power, exhaust, supplemental info, instrument gauges, and general accessories. I mean, if we abuse it, it doesn't get covered. It's just like mostly anybody's car, you get the extended warranty. If there is an issue that's truly derived from a manufacturer, part that was not installed or put, made well, they'll cover it.
So that's five years beyond the one year? Is that what you said?
It's just five years. So we're going from a one and taking it up to five.
So you're getting four beyond what they would have given you without the extended?
Yep.
All right, I'm just not a big warranty guy for most stuff I buy, but this is obviously a very expensive piece of equipment. It just seems like a lot to me, but, I mean, you know, if we, if we don't get it, something's probably going to go wrong and we're going to need it. I don't know how much all, you know, what can go wrong in those few years.
Had some repair bills between eight and fifteen thousand dollars on that machine.
Right, but on a seventeen-year-old piece of equipment, right?
Pretty much, but if you're buying it used already, you know, there was some problems.
Right, it was a two thousand three, and we bought it in two thousand.
Nine.
Nine, so it was already six years old. So that was already even past the warranty stage that we would be for this new piece of equipment, so. I don't know. I guess I'm on the fence for the warranty.
Well, I'll just say that Jake Waller, our mechanic, says we have to do that. That's his recommendation. Not that you have to listen to him, but his, his mindset, his job is to make sure our equipment is maintained, but then also we have to keep our budget. That's, that's the main thing as well. He thinks that this is the best way to go financially as well. He's not a financial person, but he sees what everything costs and takes to replace something that has gone bad.
Well, I guess we'll see in six years if I was right or not.
Well, Eric.
Five years.
You do know you have every opportunity to make a motion to approve this without the warranty and see how the rest of the council agree, if they agree with you.
Yeah, but my luck will get bit.
I was thinking the same thing, but yeah. Go ahead, Dimitri.
Well, I'd just like to agree with Eric. I mean, I don't think that they would offer a warranty if they thought that they'd lose money on it, so. Why bet against yourself? I'm not a warranty guy either. It just seems like a, it's like going to the casino and the odds are against you. You might as well.
Well, I'll probably be off council here in the next few years anyway, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we go with the, with the bid minus the extended warranty.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Eric, or Olson, second by Martin, that we approve of the purchase of EnviroTech equipment for a VacCon combination sewer cleaning truck for an amount not to exceed, that would be four hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars, which basically excludes the extended four-year warranty on this vehicle. Everybody have understanding of what the motion is? So if you, just let me explain one more time. So if you, if you vote aye, you're voting to not have the warrant, the extended warranty on this vehicle. Go ahead, Mary.
Just one question. Is, would there be an opportunity to pick up a warranty, say, after a year? Can you? I get calls all the time to extend my warranty. And I'm sure everybody does.
I don't believe that's an option, no.
Maybe they're trying to avoid phone calls.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Lori.
Justin, doesn't the cost, okay, so say you go in after a year and say, okay, I was wrong. I really wanted that warranty. Doesn't the, it kind of double or triple with each year that you're?
I'm not aware of that yet.
I think, yeah.
I think, I think the older, the higher the miles on a car, it goes up. Not at all about a big truck, just a whole different ballgame here.
But that's what I was thinking. It, it's not the same as what you were offering.
Paul, did you have a?
I, I was just doing the math in my head. That's for the four extra years, that's less than three thousand dollars per year of mechanical insurance for a four hundred-plus-thousand-dollar piece of equipment. And that kind of seems like not a bad, too bad of a deal.
Anybody else have any comments on this motion?
Mayor, is the four twenty-seven, does that include the tank liner or not?
Justin, correct me on the dollar amount.
Well, my math, it should be four thirty-five.
Okay.
Nine sixty-three without the warranty.
Okay. So Eric, and Dimitri, are you guys okay with amending it to the four thirty-five? Sorry about that. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Just so I'm clear, I mean, this extended warranty is basically for the mechanical portion of the truck, right? It, it has nothing to do with the, the vacuum capabilities and the tank and the special features.
Yeah, that's a separate warranty.
Right.
So this, like I said, is the, the diesel, the trans, the diesel engine, the transmission, and a number of other things that I listed off before, and it's parts and labor. So if any one of these things goes out, we don't have this warranty, it's probably at least eleven, twelve thousand dollars.
Anybody else? All right, everybody understands the motion?
Before.
Yeah, go ahead.
Guess before we go through this, my question is the effects of voting no or yes to this, and if we're voting down this one, is another mo- And if we're voting down this one, is another motion possible to vote for it? Or do we have to do an amendment right now to a motion to add that in to continue on? I don't know what, before I'm the first guy on the gun, I want to know what.
Which you are.
Yeah, usually.
So, Tom, do you want to give them the simple answer on that?
I think the simple answer is.
With the warranty. It's enough of a change that it's a whole different motion.
Okay, so voting no for this doesn't mean I'm voting no for the machine?
Right. Yep.
One more comment to piggyback. I did talk to Justin about the same thing Eric just mentioned today personally. And he brought up one thing that I didn't think about. It's not just this truck driving around town. It sits parked a lot and it has a lot of like hours running. The engine sits and runs and runs the equipment. And after he said that, I thought, oh yeah, you're right. It's with engine components and things, it's not, you see it stationary a lot more than you see it driving, is what I'm saying. So something to throw off. Kind of changed my thought pattern after I talked to him.
Can I make one more comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you had similar issues on the piece of equipment we have now?
Well, yes, but granted, the one we have now is 17 years, 17 years old.
So how old was it when you started having these types of issues? Within the last five years?
No, before that. We've been having costly repairs to this before I've been here.
But costly repairs are the things that these, this warranty would cover?
You're jogging my memory now.
I mean, granted, you had, the thing was six years old when you bought it, right? So it was already past the warranty of what we'd be paying for now, right? Did you have any issues the first year of use on the new piece, or on the last one, the one we own now?
Well, I wasn't here for that. So I don't know, I can't say that either, so.
All right, I'm just saying, you know, we're looking at, it's just $11,000, but it's $11,000. That's something to me, so. And if you say we'd have $11,000 worth of repairs, well then we break it even anyway.
Well, I don't know if we will or won't. It's a warranty. It's a safety measure, just in case. But if something does go wrong, we'd be glad to have it.
But the manufacturer knows what those odds are. And that's how they're pricing their warranties, make sure they make some money on it.
Sorry, I just jumped in a little bit.
No, no, that's okay, you know, I mean, yeah. Enough said. Anybody else? All right, so this is, you're voting for the vehicle with, without the warranty, but you are voting to purchase the vehicle. Sandy will call the roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Now you confuse me. Let me restate, the motion is to approve the purchase of the vehicle minus the warranty.
Yep.
If this fails, an additional motion may be entered to purchase the vehicle with the warranty.
Or whatever else they want.
Okay, so then I'll say nay.
Lori Chestnut?
Nay.
Paul Hagan?
No.
Ellen Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky?
No.
Dave Peterson?
No.
Paul Mayo?
No.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
No.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Three ayes, seven no, motion failed.
All right. So what that means then is we're back to really ground zero on this motion. We don't have to have Justin explain it all again to us, but we are back.
Sure.
Ground zero. Anybody like to?
I would make a motion that we approve the purchase of the vehicle that we're talking about at the price we're talking about that includes the warranty.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Fair, second by Mayo, that we approve of purchasing the Vaccon combination sewer cleaning truck for an amount not to exceed $447,133, which includes that extended, in that dollar amount, includes the extended four-year warranty. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Ellen Keeland?
No.
Scott Puchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
No.
Eight ayes and two no's, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Next up, we have the rezoning of the City of Opaaca River North subdivision. And this is a first reading of that, although you are probably going to hear a request to waive the first reading, and I think you'll understand why it makes sense here if, but I'll let Jared go.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So this starts on page 140 of your packet. So this is first and foremost, a zoning change application requested by the City of Opaaca to rezone the chunk of land out in the industrial park that is set to be the new River North neighborhood. The River North neighborhood, from my understanding, has been a topic of conversation well before I got here. So I'm sure you guys are well aware of that proposed development, as well as the concept plans that have come with it. So really would be looking to rezone pretty much the entire area that is set to be residential to an R3 zoning classification. So currently is I2, which is heavy industrial. And we'd be switching into R3, which is a multifamily residential, but also includes as a permitted use twin homes or duplexes as well as single family. So it kind of covers multi duplex and single family, so kind of the array of residential development that we would be looking to have in this area. Looking to start this or do this rezone, again, primarily just to get this process going for the River North neighborhood, as well as, this is one of the requirements when we go to apply for any grants, tax credits, whether that be WIDA or others. It is a requirement that the property be zoned appropriately for what it is set to be or what it is being applied to be. So in this specific instance, we are looking to apply for some WIDA tax credit for affordable housing or workforce housing out in this area. So as part of that, applications are actually due on the 10th of December, so coming up very quickly. As such, we do need to have this rezoned appropriately in order to even apply. If we were to apply without this being rezoned, the reviewers would essentially just toss it in the trash can. So looking to be able to apply for this grant, we need to switch it to R3. And that way, the development team that we are working with would be able to submit that application within the, or before the 10th, so within the timeframe. So thus, that is why I would be looking to have the first reading waived and then skip directly to the second reading with approval or denial, so that we can meet that deadline. I'll take any questions, there's some maps to kind of show you the area, a couple different pages. Page 146, as well as 144. General comment, we do own all of this land, so that is why we are able to rezone it as well as this is more of just a base zoning to ensure that we have it in the proper zoning district. As we continue to develop, survey, divide, subdivide land as necessary, we can always rezone it as we own the land. So I will take any questions you may have. Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion to approve, a motion to waive the first reading, and then a motion to approve.
I would move that we waive the first reading.
Okay, we have a motion by Keeland.
I'll second that.
Second by Fair, that we waive the first reading of ordinance number 19-2021. This is an ordinance amending 17.102 of the zoning district. Again, just for the public to understand, normally when we have an ordinance, we have two readings. At one meeting, we'll have the first reading, we will not vote on it, and then we'll bring it back to the second meeting and we'll vote on it at that time. We very seldom waive the first reading, but in this case, it seems like it's a timely event and especially since the city, we, the city owns all of that property. We have the city's best interest in mind in doing this. So that's why the request is here for the waiving. If we don't waive the first reading, we're looking at least one year or probably two years out before we can request or apply for a WIDA grant to help us with the low-income. And who knows what the environment will look like in one or two years in that situation. So, just a simple explanation. Okay, Paul, go ahead.
In general, I'm not a big fan of waiving first readings on ordinance changes. And also, I'm also not a huge fan of being presented something three days prior to having to be done. So it would seem that it probably would have been better to have this brought up in a more timely manner.
No, I completely understand and I do apologize for that. I guess without having that timeline in front of me, from what I remember, we started meeting with these development teams, so three different development teams on this development. One actually specializes in WIDA tax credit housing. So us as staff didn't have as much knowledge, I guess, as we possibly could have on WIDA tax credit housing, as it's not typically in our wheelhouse to know every day. So when we were informed of this by this development company team that specializes in these, that is when we immediately started the process, which it had to go to plan commission and then it had to come here as well as the public notice process before plan commission. So due to those factors, we were in a bit of a time crunch. We could not push the public hearing notice any faster as that state statute. And so the only area where we could skip forward a bit and meet this in that timely manner is here. So I do apologize, I know it is less than ideal and it is not something I would typically request. But I guess, and to piggyback off the mayor, so kind of a bit of a complicated process and I'll try to regurgitate as much as I could grasp from the development team. So this WIDA tax credit is based on points. So every year, I believe a county gets so many points. So as it stands now, Opaaca County has not had a project in three years. So we're kind of hitting some higher points. The City of Opaaca has not had a project, so we're hitting some higher points as well as the need. So there's a lot of factors that kind of throw up those points. Now, looking into the future, next year, could Clintonville, New London, another city apply for them? For some, you know, have higher points than us, get it? You know, we'd be looking at probably another, I won't even say three years, because it's three-year stint. We'd probably be looking at five years before we'd even have a really good chance. So a lot of factors wanted to play. And it's kind of a complex, as is anything with the state, I'm sure, but.
Scott, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a question. It seems like with the map here.
Scott, can I, are we, are you asking about the motion that's on the floor or?
Yes.
So this is on waiving the first reading?
Oh, okay, never mind, sorry.
Okay, sorry, you can ask the question, okay.
It was not about waiving the first reading, it was just a general question about the rezone. I don't know how you want to answer.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The outline map you have in blue, it seems like we're rezoning maybe more than the River North is originally set to be. Is that my understanding or am I wrong? Bus garage, next to the bus garage and such?
Yep, no, this whole area is set to be River North. So as you're looking at this map up here, kind of flipped, the small parcel kind of by that bus garage is actually set to be multifamily residential. And then kind of in the intersection, it's a mix between housing, multifamily residential, and then some office mixed use.
My misunderstanding then, yes, okay, thanks.
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so you're voting on, I'm sorry, go ahead, Colin.
This is a little difficult for me. I'm not really voiced or versed at being a council member, so please forgive me. I think that this is probably the most important thing that we can do as council members is decide how this land in our city is used. Everybody I've talked to in the city about this particular project to try and get input and see what they think about it says they have no idea what I'm talking about. It's not been in the paper. Our city council knows about it very briefly through a small report that was done after a normal meeting. I don't think the average person here knows what's all involved here, but maybe I'm wrong. The city, I don't think, as a whole, has been informed, it's not been in the newspaper. I understand the reason to chase after these credits, but I think we're doing a disservice to the city by trying to push this quickly and not give the people of this, of our city, any sort of information about this. We had a public hearing last week that was in, not city council, but the, I think you want to.
City Plan Commission?
City Plan Commission. At the time, I looked online, 12, that was viewed 12 times. The notice for it, which is completely legal and appropriate, was a two-inch by two-inch square in the paper. I really think that in this case, we should stick with the two readings. Thank you.
Thanks, Colin. Everybody else have any comments on this? Dave, go ahead.
I would comment this way, it's been zoned industrial for how long? 20 years, more?
At least 20 years.
And nobody's put any industry out there. I don't think we're going to lose, we're going to lose if we don't make it residential. We'll be sitting for another five years with no more industry and nothing growing out there. I think it behooves us, I agree, we don't want to make a practice of this, but I think it would be important to jump on this when we have the chance because of that application thing.
Thanks, Dave. Let me go to Lori and I'll come back to you, Colin. Go ahead.
I think this is really important because we have such a need and I think most people in Opaaca understand the need for housing in this area. I mean, I work all the time with trying to find housing for people through my job and this is just a wonderful opportunity to bring some in at a decent price.
Thanks, Lori. Colin, do you want to make another comment?
To respond to Dave Peterson's point, there is a lot of people that feel that there's no development in this industrial park. I have a list of the places that are developed. 1850 Godfrey Drive, value is 1.13 million, tax every year is $28,000. I could go through every one, but I don't think you're interested in it that much. The total value of the tax that's generated by the facilities, the industry that is in this area we're talking about, immediately surrounding that box, is $173,548 a year to our city. To say that there's no industry in our industrial park, I don't think is correct. My personal favorite industry out there is a company that's on the tax trail, is Ellery. I think everybody else might know it as Centerline Industries. It was started by a gentleman who started his company in a garage somewhere near here, as I understand, and then developed that and brought it into our industrial park. Carousel Gymnastics, another facility that's there. We sold land to them 2016 at a price of $30,000 an acre, I believe, and we gave a subsidy back to them of $45,000. It's very, very valuable land. I don't think it's appropriate for housing development when we have so much other land that's adjacent to our downtown corridors that can be developed for this sort of housing. Thank you.
Colin, your argument seems to be against rezoning, not against the first reading, waiving the first reading.
I've been on council for seven years now, and to my knowledge, this is only the second time we've waived a first, if we waive it, is to waive the first reading. So, it's not as though we're setting precedents here, but it does not happen very frequently. And I think in view of the timeliness that we have to undergo, I think it's worth waiving it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, let's, so you're waiving, if you vote aye, you're voting to waive the first reading, and we're gonna do a roll call vote. Sandy?
Colin Dykstra?
Nay.
Lori Chesnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, one no, motion carried.
All right, so, next on the agenda then, is the second reading, or the approval of ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Olson, that we approve ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one. This is an ordinance amending seventeen point one zero two of the zoning district map as allowed for under seventeen point seven zero zero. Any further discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, hold on. Colin?
Again, I apologize to my fellow members, this is quite difficult for me. It's my understanding that on any given subject, a council member may be allowed ten minutes to present a negative argument against it, and I would like to be allowed that time right now. As I'm a new member of the community, I don't know all the history that's on here, that goes on here, but I don't believe it's in our best interest at all to destroy our industrial park. Over twenty years ago, the leaders of the community bought and set aside the acres of land on that western side of our city with a vision of preserving that land for the development, the industrial development that would support the next generation of our citizens. Tonight, we're voting whether or not to abandon that vision. We have a vision here in Wapaka that we state all the time. It's a vision of to be the community of choice for all people and businesses, as a premier place to work, live, shop, and play. As I prepared to understand how to evaluate this particular development, it really kept me up at night, and I tried to find something that would help me understand the benefits and negatives sides of this particular issue. I encountered a document, A Citizen's Guide to Land Use in Wisconsin, and paid particular attention to the section describing evaluating a development proposal. It suggests asking critical questions of the proposal. What's proposed and where? Is the proposed use compatible with the surrounding uses in the area? Is the proposal fundamentally flawed, meaning is it the right development in the right place? Or is it the right development in the wrong place, the wrong development in the wrong place, or the wrong development in the right place? It asks you to examine the impact on the infrastructure and burdens on the local government, and what will the development pay for itself? And what does it mean for the future of development in our community? Will this development take your community in the direction it wants to go? I want to very quickly and briefly go through these, because I know that I'm in the minority here, but it's sure gonna help me sleep at night if I can get through this. The first question, is the proposed use compatible with the surrounding uses? We're talking about putting residential neighborhood in the middle of an industrial section of our town. The long-term development of that area is gonna be stopped on the north by industrial land, on the majors, there's a major highway to the east, a river to the south, construction yard to the west. One of the biggest problems, I think, that any residence, residential people will have there complaining is the railroad noise, the railroad is right across the street. We already receive railroad complaints from our best, well, our premier subdivision, Swan Park. When the FLUM, Future Land Use Map, was updated in March, there was a positive mention that it would match the existing development that has occurred there. That development being daycare areas, educational, recreational trails, commercial and office space. As far as daycare, and this is when I go back to our idea of being the premier place to live and work, the daycare could also be a draw for industrial companies that want to take, have the ability to bring their kids with them, and have a place right across the street from where they work to visit with their children, to bring their kids. It might allow children who are out of our area to come to our schools. As far as educational, Fox Valley Tech is there, it might be an attraction for the industrial concerns that might consider relocating there. As far as recreational, again, a draw for industrial companies, as workers can rest and relax on the recreational trails in the area during their lunch breaks, or perhaps after work. I personally swap out the story walk that's on the trail next to Sunny Day, and I can tell you for a fact that that trail gets walked nearly every lunch by the, one of the physical therapists that's at the chiropractors or the physical therapy area there. I think that's a draw that we can sell as an industrial park. And another area that's industrial, Gussmer Area, I've seen many of their employees enjoying walks on that trail. Again, commercial, there's a spine and physical therapy right next door to the industrial clients who might use them. And then office space, there's a nice office space on the corner that might be available for the management of any industrial concern that comes down there. I see a major prob, oh, that's the wrong page. Is the proposal fundamentally flawed? I believe that it is. I believe that it's the right development. I believe we do need to have housing in this town. I believe we do need to have affordable housing, but we would no longer have a business park. Any business that would want to utilize that railroad would have to go either to Amherst or to Wyegah. I don't think that's in our best interest. Land with the same designation of the land we're talking about on our FLUM, our Future Land Use Map, is currently listed for sale by Udoni Salon. This is thirty-two acres, that's out by the interchange. That thirty-two acres they're valuing, or estimating, or what they're asking, one point two million dollars for, that's forty, nearly forty thousand dollars an acre. Lyons Real Estate has another property on Runway Drive, thirteen acres, they want five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's forty thousand dollars an acre. Commercial Drive has another property, five point eight acres, that's fifty thousand dollars an acre. If we take the lowest of these, approximately forty thousand dollars an acre, the eighty acres of the business park that we're proposing to develop in some other way is worth three point two million dollars. The land sold to Carousel Gymnastics, we sold it thirty thousand dollars an acre. There's other places in town that we can do this. At the current time, there's over sixty acres of land available within walking distance to Fulton Street Corridor. There's a twenty-nine acre parcel marketed by Lyons that goes for, I have, it's about eighteen K per acre, it's five hundred and fifty thousand or so. There's another area, another area that could be used for development called Duck Lake Road. This is, again, walking distance to our Fulton Street Corridor. There's an area of a blighted church that we could use our funds for. There's a former county building that sits and is, I guess it's not vacant, it's being used as a rental for large vehicles. But I believe that those are opportunities that we have to put residential, low-cost housing in our town. The value of the railroad that is so good to the industrial use of that property is also a huge detriment to the residential use of that property. Next question is, will it pay for itself? The answer's completely no. We're saying that our city should give the land to these people, the WEDA people, the developers, we're gonna give the land, the land that down the street is worth forty thousand dollars an acre. We're making agreements to sell for a dollar an acre, or a dollar for five acres. We're also trying to put in a TIF program, another TIF program to fund this, under the same guide I've been looking at, A Citizen's Guide to Land Use in Wisconsin. Using it, they quote, "Using a TIF program, the TIF program was created in nineteen seventy-five as a way of redeveloping blighted urban areas." In our town, I would think that that's describing the church and perhaps the county building. It goes on in that paragraph to describe how TIF functions, I think we are learning, or at least I'm learning, but everybody else probably knows. And then it concludes with all this, although this is how a TIF should work, which is to say, redeveloping blighted urban areas, the program has been abused in recent years to subsidize the development on the urban fringe. I think that's exactly what we're doing here, we're subsidizing development of the urban fringe. The next question, impact on the infrastructure, burdens on local government. We would no longer have a business park, I think that's a huge weakness for our city. We have, in our Future Land Use Map, identified another area that may be used as a business park, but the gentleman who owns it was very clear that he doesn't want to sell, he doesn't think the property is appropriate for a business use, and he thinks his children want to use that property. If we get rid of our business park, we're going to have to require the taxpayers of our town to buy another one if we decide that that's the right use. The second point here is the infrastructure and the services required for the development there in that area probably won't pay for the development itself. Again, the quote I have from A Citizen's Guide to Land Use in Wisconsin, "New developments don't only generate more property tax dollars, they also cost a lot of tax dollars in the form of newer, larger roads, road maintenances, emergency services such as police and fire, schools, and more." And in many ways, sprawl is by far the most expensive type of development, and costs a lot more to serve than it generates in tax revenues. I don't believe that this is the right area for us to develop our city. The next point. What does this development mean for future development? There's a key trend for our, from our city's comprehensive plan that I think we should note. The modest growth that's predicted in the 2020s is followed by population decline forecasted in twenty, starting in 2030. Future population growth, it says, will be tied to job growth. If we get rid of our industrial area, where is the job growth going to happen? Furthermore, the negative pressure, which I feel that will be felt on subdivisions within the city, within the areas that we're targeting to redevelop, mainly our Churchill Street and Main Street and Fulton Street corridors, it will be difficult for local builders to build there when there's subsidized housing going out by where the old industrial park will be. Using the TID for that area also detracts from the possibilities of using it to support other areas in the town that are blighted, or to use the TID to support industrial investment in that particular area. The existing rail infrastructure over at that area could be used for some sort of distribution center, logistics center, with the current trends of cost of fuel and freight heading right by Wapaka. We all see the train going by all the time. And in fact, maybe, perhaps not many of the city council members know, one of our newest additions to our industrial area, Presto, this summer, has, almost without any input from the city, decided to expand their industrial processes there, because the railroad is right there. Next to their house, next to their building, the city has land that could possibly be used to bring a railroad spur across the street into the industrial park. The last question is, will this development take your community in the direction it wants to go? And I think the answer is absolutely not. In the stated goals of our land use section of our comprehensive plan, the goal is to strengthen our city's commercial and mixed-use districts, including Main, Churchill, and Fulton Streets. Another goal is to grow and strengthen Wapaka's neighborhoods so that residents of all ages are able to meet their basic daily needs by foot or on bicycle. There's absolutely no way any resident in the industrial park will be able to meet any need by foot or by bicycle, especially if the places they're trying to get to are on Fulton Main and Churchill Street. Another goal we have is to support the growth and development of local small-scale developers. We're not contacting them. The small-scale developers that are involved here in the town, who are already providing very affordable housing, have not been contacted about this directly, or perhaps indirectly, but the ones I've contacted had no idea this was even happening. One of the complaints we saw in last year's survey from local residents, I'd like to state right now, the fact, he was complaining that the city makes decisions and pushes projects that are contrary to the wishes of the residents and the businesses affected. The residents have very clearly said that they want to have a downtown that they want to go to, they want to have places to live there, they want, they want to be, they want, they want to have a Kmart back or somebody in that area. If we start putting property on the other side of town, my fear is that instead of using our downtown, it's twenty-two minutes to the Walmart in New London from the Fox Valley Technical Institute. To go to our corner of McDonald's, I'll call it everyday hometown, is eleven minutes. I think anybody living out there would strongly consider going to New London, as opposed to using our downtown corridor. I suppose that's enough from me. Thank you, everyone, for your attention and letting me get this out. I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor to approve ordinance number nineteen dash twenty twenty-one. Any further discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll?
Colin Dykstra?
No, nay.
Lori Chesnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
No.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, two noes, motion carried.
All right, let's move on, we have, we're going to Sandy here. Appointments of election inspectors for two-year term, January first, 2022 through December thirty-first, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor. Every two years, as a municipal governing body, is required to appoint our election inspectors for a two-year term. The term would be January first, 2022 through December thirty-first, 2023. The major political parties have until November thirtieth to submit their names, people that they would suggest or like to be poll workers. And we did receive one from both of the political parties, the major parties, and you'll notice in your packet that there are red lines through some of them. We contacted, either by email or phone, every person on the list, and the ones that are crossed off are the ones that said they did not want to be an election inspector for the city of Wapaka. So, what I'm looking for is approval, excuse me, I better back up. We also, I also included our unaffiliated list, which is our current inspectors that are already trained and weren't on either of the party's lists. So, what I'm looking for is approval of these lists excluding the nominees with the red line through them.
Okay, anybody have any questions about what Sandy's presenting? We'd be looking for a motion to approve this list.
Move to approve.
Motion by, motion by Keeland, I'm sorry, who's second?
Scott.
Scott.
Scott, Pachatsky. Second by Pachatsky to approve this list, election list. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no? Motion carried. Next up, we have an ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-one, this has to do with the polling hours.
This is a cleanup item. Back in early 2000s, the state had changed the polling hours from eight AM till seven AM until eight PM, and our municipal code had never been updated to reflect that. So, that's all this does, is just clean it up. We've been, of course, running our elections from seven A to AP, as we should. So, this would be the first reading, and then the second reading would be at the first meeting in January. Is there any questions on that?
All right, let's go to the purchase of the election bagger books.
And my third item, as I had originally written in my... And my third item, as I had originally written in my memo, that I was waiting on the vendor to supply me with the quote, I received the quote today. So what I'd like to do is decrease the amount from $16,000 down to 12, not to exceed $12,131. These are the electronic poll books, which I've spoke about at various meetings or in my monthly reports, and I'd like to have them in place. We were told there's a 20-week turnaround, and so we're hoping to receive them and be trained by the August 2022 elections. And I would need an approval by that, for that as well.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Make a motion. Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve of the purchase of six Badger Books from Paragon Development Systems Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $12,131 to be used for the 2021 election fund. Elections. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just had, what do they, what do they look like? How do they function? Just real quick.
It's no different than your iPad. You'll have a, what is that called? I would turn it around and you would, that's where you would sign, you would not have the paper books, you would, everything would be done on that. And as you, as you come in, announce your name, it locate, we find it, it locates it. It'll print out your number, and you'll be sent off to get your ballot to vote. And at the same time, it records a vote in WISVOTE, which is the state election voting program, and that saves us hours and weeks of time after each election. Very, very efficient and cost-saving for us. That's how I look at it.
I was just curious.
Thank you. Any other questions?
It was a great question. I was thinking of a book, too.
Yeah, it's the coupon.
It's no different than shopping at the grocery store. You know, you've got it in front of you.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, Sandy will call the roll?
Colin Dykstra?
Approve.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Sandy. Next up, on the license report number 1559, and this has to do with operators' license. As we all know, those are actually bartender's licenses. We call them operators' license. Two individuals that are applying, we would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Keeland, that we approve of license report 1559. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. License report number 1560. This is our drivers, taxi drivers' renewals, and this must be on an annual basis, meaning January 1st through December 31st. So you'll have, you have quite a list in front of you. We would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson to approve license report number 1560. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. License report number 1561. This is a taxi cab vehicle renewal. You'll see the vehicles that are being renewed by our, the city's taxi service, Brown Cab Company. We would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Keeland, that we approve license report 1561. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next, we have license report 1562. And Sandy, you must not have gotten any sleep this month. Dance hall license. This has to do, this again is an annual renewal of dance, of dance hall licenses. You can see the list on your, on your, I got it on page 158 of our packet. We need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve license report number 1562, dance hall license. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Communications recommendations of the mayor. First of all, this is obviously the holiday season. As I promised at our last meeting, we are going to not hold a second meeting in December. I've been assured by department heads that they don't have anything. They tried to fit it into this meeting or the first meeting in January. It's subject to call, as always, but I think we're pretty, we're pretty sure we won't have to have that meeting. So, and just want to wish everybody a happy holidays. And anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting?
Just add elected officials. Mayor are also invited to this all-staff luncheon tomorrow at the rec center, so feel free to drop by. We have a session at 11:30 as well as 12:15.
It doesn't matter which one?
Nope, come to either one.
Or both, yeah.
Or both.
Or both.
If you're hungry enough, yeah, right. Anything else for the night? All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn to our next regular council meeting, which is Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Subject to call. Wait there. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We're adjourned at 8:19. Drive safe, everyone.